Okay, well, we are at seven PM and seven commissioners. So we are all here and ready to go. So in the case of an emergency, we can exit out of the back of the room, either door and go either direction down the hallway. Are there any agenda changes? Okay, we will keep it as is. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Okay, not hearing any of those announcements and staff report. Any announcements? Any staff report?
So the only staff report thing that I, on the Tuesday after Memorial Day, can remember to report is the committee chairs. So the advisory committees like affordable housing, economic development, bike, pet, et cetera, are meeting tomorrow evening to discuss some of the committee structure and sort of ideas for the for the future of the of those committees in South Burlington. You know what's working, what's not working, et cetera. So that is an ongoing work item of the council to look at how everything is structured, how it relates to the policy and priority, policy priorities and strategies of each fiscal year and how it all relates to the city plan. So just a quick note that that is something that is ongoing.
That doesn't include the planning commissions?
No, because the planning commission is a statutory committee that has very specific statutory roles. It's possible that the result of the discussion at city council could mean that certain things that may or may not be directly statute-related may sort of come and go, or the structure of who reports to the planning commission or who the planning commission asks to do certain tasks or that sort of sort of chain structure may be either altered or clarified or something else. But that's pretty much the extent of the planning commission's involvement.
And I'm, and just, I'm not attending. I was not part of the planning of it. So, yeah.
And neither.
It's not like I'm just skipping.
No.
It was the intention, the intention was not, yeah.
Yeah, the the planning commission and the DRB are in that sort of special category of of different things. And possibly the sextons are also have sort of statutory responsibilities. So are not not quite in the same. Well, they're just quite a little bit different kind of bucket.
Created by statute.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Required by statute. The rest of this stuff is our.
And Helen, you have a good point. There were a few years back, probably a good five years at this point. Like we had had all the committee chairs meet together a few times to just kind of get an understanding of what the different committees were. That was kind of around, it was probably right after we did the last comp plan update to like kind of talk about goals for the city and and things like that. So it has been a while since we had done that, like bigger, all the committee chair kind of get together. And I guess, speaking of that, my one announcement is Duncan and I met last week with the city council chair and vice chair, staff and and the legal team. Just, you know, we do that occasionally, especially when there's something big coming up, like what we've been working on. So we were able to just kind of do some planning and coordination and got some feedback on what we've been working on directly from the legal team, which I think was kind of nice that they were included this time. So that was, you know, an occasional kind of meeting that happens. And any other, anything else?
I had a question about, not related to tonight's agenda, but about the, something I noticed in the minutes of the May 14th meeting that Duncan had asked if we were going to dispense with the conservation PUD. Duncan had asked if there was a loss of conservation. And Kelsey said that staff would say there's no loss of regulatory conservation. Does that mean there's a loss of some other kind of conservation that's non-regulatory?
So I think that is related to the agenda a bit later on. But the clarification I was making is something like a permanent conservation easement is a legal conservation tool where something like the NRP, expanding a zoning district, having habitat blocks, having buffers around wetlands, those are all regulatory versions of of conservation. So there's, there's a few different things you can do. You can privately put something in a deed or you can sell a conservation easement. Those would be legal conservation versus regulatory conservation that result from the words of the regulations themselves.
Okay, not, so not really conservation. A buffer is a requirement of our Article 12, for example.
That's regulatory conservation. It's conservation of a wetland and wetland buffer through the regulations in Article 12.
Okay, it just doesn't seem like that's conservation to me. That's, that's a regulation.
I guess if you think of it as conservation and protection, protection of a wetland, that's the reason that the regulation exists is that is the protection of that environmental resource.
Okay.
Michael, I think you either have the date or the person wrong because I wasn't here on the 14th.
A date of, that was the minutes for the May.
Yeah, it's the other Mr. McDonald's.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say I wasn't. I wasn't here in that meeting, so.
I just, I just said, because you weren't there, I just used Mr. McDonald's.
Minutes of the April 23rd meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
Which we did on the 14th of May.
Very good. Okay, well, let's jump right into item five, the LDR updates, starting with the Article 15 updates. Now I have the agenda on my phone. I'm not like surfing the net. I'm referring to the agenda. Not watching the game.
I found it very difficult to do without a red line. And I didn't get very far.
Yeah, this is, I, you know, I did have a conversation with Kelsey about this. And I think both of us apologize that there's not a red line. But this was a hard one because a lot of the the language was rearranged into different locations. So it wasn't necessarily like deleted or added. It's it's in different spots. So that makes it like the breadline really complicated to look at. So I, I did also express some, you know, I don't know. It makes it hard. And I think we all recognize that. That is the case. So to that, to that end, there is a kind of, in the memo packet, a bullet list of kind of descriptions of the specific things that are changed, as well as the clean revised version with no red lines. Do you, do you think that it was so difficult that we'd need to like provide the breadline for like the next meeting? Do you think, like, maybe?
Yeah, depends how, if we can make any progress tonight. Which, other than, yeah, it's fine, which I don't think we should do. I had a question, but I don't know if I'm answering your question. I think we need a red line version. Otherwise, it's extremely difficult to tie the the bullet points to the text.
Okay, you know, it feels like the kind of thing that might be really important for the public as well. I wonder, Kelsey, if there's a way to. I know this is an extra step of work and, but to, if it's something that was moved, to just kind of accept that track change, but add a comment or something or like highlight it, just to say that it was moved.
Yeah, so part, part of the problem is that there are things that were moved and edited, and they don't show up as both.
Okay.
So like for, so I'm just pulling up the red line version that I have. This is what it looks like. So it's not very helpful.
Because it's pretty red.
Because it's been, it's either new or it's been moved from somewhere else. And so some of these things, like some of them do have these strikes shown. Some of them, because this has been an iterative process over several months, it's just very difficult to, and a couple of things are my notes because this is a rougher draft slightly. But like, for example, some of this definitely was not changed by me. It was just rearranged, and that is reflected sometimes by the number being out of order because, you know, 15A10 is not in the right place. So I moved it up from where it used to be. But then there's strike throughs and things. But for example, if I had stricken some language in a play, in one place, and then moved the whole paragraph, it just shows as whole, having moved the whole paragraph. It doesn't sort of preserve the previous. So that's why in the memo I had offered, if there were specific things that you were looking for, I'm happy to find them in this meeting. But providing, so like, for example, when I provided you the 15A, I think it was something like 23 pages, the red line is 44. Because it's just, it's a lot of duplicated language because it shows where it was cut and where it arrived on both ends.
All package is 60 pages.
Right. So this is only one section. This is 15A, there's 15B and C and the other things.
So what struck, what's read and struck out is either deleted or moved somewhere else.
No, because the thing, there's, if something is read and underlined, it is probably just moved. If it is read and stricken and underlined, it was probably moved and stricken. However, because there have been several drafts of this in the last few months, from the current LDRs to the present draft, because of different conversations that were had and different versions that were created for other review purposes, it's, it's very difficult. I'm, I'm happy to provide the red line version. I guess I'm saying I don't, I'm happy to do that. I'm not sure it's any more helpful than the clean.
Duncan?
I'm just wondering, would it make sense? I mean, you, you provide us with each of the articles, and there's some bullets underneath, and then below that, there's a section of changes. I don't know if it would make sense for the commissioners if we went through each of those bullet points and just quickly, does anybody have a question on it? Do they understand it? And then move down to the changes? I'm.
All right, the two together, yeah.
Can you?
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of the best way to get through. I mean, it, it sounds like the the red line version would be a lot of paper and somewhat confusing.
Maybe it would be easier for Kelsey to give a page reference, maybe next to each bullet point?
Yes.
That would take us to.
Sort of like where it ended up or where it came. Because some of it's like consolidated or clarified. There's some things that are a single bullet point are because a similar statement was made three times in different sections of this, of the document, and I consolidated them and put them somewhere else. So a page reference to where it landed wouldn't tell you where it came from.
You keep going, Duncan.
Yeah, it looks like, I mean, the, the first list, it just, real quickly, things that you did. The changes, it seems like that's the part that would be more substantive that we would really want to talk about. So, you know, I don't know if we just want to go through each of the changes and see, is there clarity on that? Are there issues with it?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Changes or some notes would pique some someone's interest, but not necessarily someone else.
I guess the bottom line in my mind and the reason that I was comfortable sending, and it, and it's fine if others are not comfortable. But the reason I was comfortable with sending the clean is that I felt that because so much was done and so much was sort of reshuffled, especially even between A, being 15A, 15B and 15C. Like, it's not just within this document, it's within the three word documents, that I was hoping for the commission's response to the draft regulations and how they, how they read, how it works, if it's logical, et cetera. And it may not matter quite as much where something came from as much as do you agree with the forward moving regulations.
Right, that's.
Donna and then Fran. All of the, the comment that I was gonna make, that the reorganization of it, you know, for as far as I've been able to get through it, it, it seems logical, you know? And so the, the overall structure of it, I think maybe we could just talk about that and, you know, just how the overall organization has changed. And, you know, and I have, I know now like what's been left out, but I think it reads clearly, you know? And I mean, as I go through, it's like, okay, that's logical. But I don't know what the old one was because I never read the old one. So perhaps a little bit of review of how it's organized now, just on a, on a high level, seems, you know, and how that changed, that would, that would be kind of helpful. Oh, the other, the other comment I had was, I presume the DRB is gonna have some comments about this? How do they review it?
They don't.
They don't.
They don't?
No.
They want to? I would think.
They don't.
They just get them.
They don't have any statutory ability to do so because they are, we, this is the legislative body. They're the sort of judicial, semi-judicial body. So it's the same way that judges don't weigh in on statutes when they're being written.
So as long as nothing's missing, they're not gonna, they're not gonna have any objections to it.
Right, and let me just sort of caveat what I, what I just said. The DR, the development review staff, we have been working with them about some of this. Like, I have sent things to, to Marla, who's, who's the lead on that side of our office, and said, you know, if I make this change, if I propose to consolidate this list of submission requirements, or I can propose to move it over here, does that cause problems? And she would tell me yes or no, or only if you did it this way, or you could do half of what you're saying. We've been doing that kind of back and forth on the staff, the staff level.
Because she, she's in the weeds.
Oh, yeah.
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 She would.
Yeah, she, she's the lead on the side of our office who is doing the staff report. So an application comes in and they review everything, write a staff report for the DRB to use in their review.
Yeah.
So she uses the LDRs every single day and can tell me exactly like, you know, I've, you can cut that because we've literally never used it because it's redundant to this other section or, or whatever it is. Or vice versa, we use that every day, even if it looks redundant to me. Maybe that's where it should stay and we should do something different.
That's very helpful to know.
Fran had had his hand up, and then Helen.
I found it to be readable and it made sense. The only thing I can't do is tell what did it used to say? So I wonder if, as we go through this, if could we go through it? You know, maybe paragraph, work our way through it. With you explaining, we did this because. And, and if you can look at your red line and understand it, we may not.
I can probably understand it because there's certain situations where something may have been, you know, three sections in the PUD section that then got squashed and rewritten and put into the subdivision section or something. So there may not be a direct kind of one to one from the old regulations to the new. Because you should have seen the walls of my office. I took all of Article 15 and cut it up into little pieces, physically, into little pieces and taped it and rearranged the taped pieces and connected it with string, and it looked very FBI. And so. So it's, part of it's come down now because I ran out of time on my painter's tape on the wall. But this was, there was a lot of kind of, well, this section says a thing that's very similar to this, and we should consolidate it, moving it there. And I'm just a visual person, so that's how I worked it out. So barring a tour of that three-wall system, that I, it'd be hard to, yeah, well, I pulled some of it down, unfortunately. But there are, there are certain things that are not in, that either were in the previous, written a certain way, that do not appear in the new version. I have noted anything that the substance has been changed. This is all like changing language, consolidating, making things more concise and readable. Otherwise, there are also things that have been added here that have been sort of reworking the, the concept of something that was in the previous. So the, so the language doesn't appear anymore, but the concept still does, just broken out in a different way. So the one to one is kind of hard, yeah.
So.
Helen had her hand up next.
I just wanted to go back to the comment about the DRB. And it's my recollection that on occasion, the DRB did at least inform the council that there was some confusion or they needed more clarity around different issues, which is, I didn't see it as assuming the role of legislatively, but rather, here's the document you, you gave to us. As we have worked through different projects or applications, we found some things either confusing or we need some more direction about how far can we go with making decisions on our own related to, you know, whatever we feel best. So I, I think there, it's important to have that iterative conversation so that the final draft makes sense to them and is.
Not ambiguous.
Yeah, and we, or, you know, they don't come back a month later with the first project that comes through under these rules and say, wow, you know, you forgot about this, or this just is not clear. So I think it's important to have, but so you're having it with Marla. But it, I think it's always helpful to ask the people who are actually thinking about it, making the decision, not presenting the information, but rather interpreting it on behalf of the community.
And the, the way, and the, the way you described it and the way we've done it in the past or this is true. But usually that happens after adoption, once they're like using it to provide feedback. And then a lot of times, we've then taken that feedback to make adjustments. One of the things that we've typically done, especially after like a, a big change, is to just understand as a group, we probably didn't get it exactly perfectly perfect the first time and be open to that feedback, you know, as, as projects come through, you know?
Yep. Well, can we distinguish, Kelsey, between some consolidation, which doesn't change the sense of what's written, and things that are moved, which doesn't change anything? And, and, and things that are actually a change in the rules? Because those are the ones that I think we'd be interested in, the rest, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say that's the second list in the memo is the actual changes. There are, there are several places in these, in this draft where something has had the language tweaked for something like using the word parcel when we're trying to be consistent, use the word lot or, or something like that. But then also was moved, but then also was consolidated with another small section, but then also, you know, did something else. So it's, it would be hard to break all of those things apart from each other. But I think identifying the actual changes in substance, that is what's listed in the memo.
Well, I think we ought to go right there.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Go through.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's.
Different reorganization, but rather what are the critical changes? And see if we understand that and agree with them.
Okay, so for now, let's start, it's partway through page two of the memo. It's the, it starts kind of in the middle of the page under the words, "That said, there's a few changes in substance." So we'll start with Article 15A subdivision and talk through these items because this is like the summary of the policy changes.
So then I have a question right off the bat.
Perfect.
Two questions. One is something that you can do at another time, but I don't think we've ever, you've ever explained what provisions of S100, Act 42, H42, as in your terms, contravene the conservation PUD? One question. And the next question is, you added, you've got your added ability to use a habitat block, da, 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 as part of civic space when specific criteria are met. It seems to me that the use of a habitat block as civic space is incompatible with what a habitat block is supposed to be. It's not meant for people to stumble around and disturb the critters that live there that we, that, for which we've provided the habitat.
We don't have trails that go through habitat blocks?
We do.
Thank you, Carol. So this is actually a really good topic of discussion.
So this.
Well, there's a lot there. Trails are one thing, but accessible to the neighborhood residents contains at least one trail, one and/or sitting scenic viewing and or picnicking area. That's, I would, I would hate to see that happen in a habitat block. And it doesn't seem compatible with the definition of the purpose, which, you bear with me, it's, the main goals of identifying habitat resources that meet the needs of a wide variety of wildlife life species and provide opportunities for some species to access several habitat areas. The city engages a consultant, da, 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 da. Prepared by Arrowood, locates and ranks certain contiguous forested areas and adjacent unmanaged shrubby areas of old field, young forest and unmanaged wetlands. Based on the information in the report, the city has designated certain areas permanently as habitat blocks. It's, is the purpose of a habitat block overlay district standards to avoid undue adverse effects from development on these resources, promote the natural succession of vegetated areas of native vegetation in order to support wildlife habitat and the movement and movement and promote carbon sequestration, filter the air and increase infiltration of base flows in the city's streams and lake Champlain. There's nothing about civic space in that. That's a good definition of what a habitat block should be. That's what's in 1204, chapter 1204.
Well, let's go back to the definition of civic space. I, I understood it to be a little more broadly than a path. A, a walking path is civic space. That's the use by residents of whatever the, the land is.
Well, what's written in the new draft is more than a path.
Yeah, and.
Well, it's an option, but it doesn't require all of them.
And, and I think Michael's maybe saying it should maybe not, not include all those options, if any.
Yeah, I mean, you all know conservation is my shtick. So it, it, that's why it caught my attention very quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, well, I'm not, I'm not sure if we can find an example of, of a development where part of the land was conserved. I know that Dorset Farms has some walking trails to the southwest, south and west of the neighborhood. And they, I mean, it's, it's pretty wild land, you know? It's, it's, there's nothing developed there, but there are trails. And, and they do get used by the neighborhood. I think that's probably an example of this.
South Village does, has trails as well, but they were defined when the plan was made. And they're quite restrictive. They're pretty close to the development, not into the woods.
No, they go into the woods.
Not very far.
Hmm, I disagree. I've been on them.
Yeah, another example would be, well, just a sort of opposite where I live, on the Hill Farm property, the woods there already have trails in them. There's some dense parts where there's no trails, but that's, that's a pretty accessible, pretty accessible land there. And it is heavily forested. So I think that would be, and since that property is going to get developed and that piece of the property is going to remain forested, that this is probably a prime example of, does that land constitute part of the civic space? And I think if you say no, it would, it wouldn't be. I think it would be harder to get the. it, I think it would be harder to get the developer to like include it or, you know, because they don't have to improve it or they don't even have to do anything to it. Um, they just have to leave it the way it is and they can, they can call it civic space, which I think is fair.
Um, are you, just to be clear, are you saying that it it could include all those things they listed the, um?
I don't know about picnic, I don't know about picnic areas. I mean, there could be a bench, but people's concept of picnic area, I I can't see picnic tables being in those areas, but certainly, certainly a a natural bench or a log or something like that. Um, that seems consistent.
Uh, I think Fran, you'd your hand up, I think, first, and then we'll go to Duncan.
South Point has. No, um, South Point, I think the land on the east side of Parkside Drive is all conserved. There are, there are paths in the woods that the neighborhood built that go all the way back. They also connect to the paths in Hubbard. And I, I don't think those have an impact on the habitat back there, but they they don't include anything but a, like an informal path.
Look, paths and trails are a fact of life in almost all of these habitat blocks and some that are not habitat blocks, the, um, the woods. There's a, a parcel between, um, South Point and Hubbard, uh, which belongs to the Chalnicks. There are lots of trails in there. Uh, that's fine, but, um, specifying that that we must have, uh, sitting areas and and or picnic areas. And and I think we we shouldn't do, we shouldn't do anything. We should leave things the way they are. Why do we need to specify that, uh, ability to use the habitat block as a civic space? What is the reason for that? It seems to be contradictory to the purpose of a habitat block.
It was suggested to us as, um, a potential factor in determining how much use a property owner can make of the habitat block property.
To, well, actually, I think it comes back to that table you were showing. I think we should look at the table, but we can hear from Duncan first.
You know, I just wanted to say, when I read that, Michael, I was in agreement with you. I wasn't totally on board with all that stuff in habitat block. However, I think just about every major habitat block in this city has passed through it.
That's fine.
So I I'm okay with what Donna said of if the path is there, let it be. Maybe give them some credit for that, but I I would agree with Michael. I don't think we want to be putting picnic areas and sitting areas in all these areas. So I I don't know how we condition that use that, yeah, we're okay with a path, a natural path that's been made, but not picnic areas or something like that.
Let's say I'm the owner of a, of a habitat block. And I'm happy with walking there, making paths and, um, and and having public access to. That's fine. Uh, but why do we want to write it in that we're giving the owner of the property some something, some, I'm not quite sure what, um.
Yeah.
We're giving credit for the area of the path and calling it civic space.
So I would just caution the planning commission that we are actually edging up on, um, the topic of an ongoing litigation. And if we want to continue to have this kind of conversation, you may want to request an executive session with the city attorney's office.
Yeah. Is it okay to understand more about what's in this table already? Because this is, so so part of why I think that this could be in the draft is because we, um, not everyone might be familiar with this table, but, um, we require certain amounts of civic space in our, um, in our developments, in our built areas, um, to provide, you know, spaces for people who are going to live and or work in those areas. So as part of, um, the requirement, we have this table that specifies like the type of civic space and then gives like all the different criteria for what, what you have to do to make it count. So we already have this thing called wooded area.
So just to be totally clear, this is a, it's, it's currently a site amenity type. Um, we would be allowing, just moving the same definition into the civic space table. Because civic space is in subdivision, site amenity is in site plan. So sort of, it's supposed to be sort of the scale of the site, like site amenity is for one or one or two buildings. The civic space is for the scale of a neighborhood or the scale of a of a new development area. Sort of a common space.
There's a definition of civic space.
Yeah.
So maybe we should look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what Han was pointing out, really circling back on what civic space is.
A viewing platform is an interesting one on that list. Is technically, technically, if it's off limits to any construction, you're not going to be able to put a viewing platform in there.
Yeah, I think about, um, yeah, so I think just because we have the wooded area in the table, it makes sense to be clear about, um, what can go where. Were you looking at definition of civic space? Kelsey is working on.
Would, would signage, I'm thinking of, um, for a viewing area, um, Red Rocks Park, which I know is different than a development. But there are, um, a couple of spaces where they have like a plaque or something that tells you what you're looking at or some information. And it's, um, I mean, one of them is right on the cliff, so they actually do have, um, a chain fence um, for people's protection. And I don't imagine that necessarily in this kind of civic space. But there could very well be, um, a really nice place along one of these paths. It is a good viewing spot. And if there's any way to incorporate signage, I don't know if that would, upset the habit, the, um, animals.
Of course it would, they can't read.
But but that would be a a usefulness, I suppose, and may even be a way to, um, you know, encourage people to appreciate the natural state. But, you know, I'm not proposing that we have signage included in this requirement, but I'm just wondering if that could be an example, something like.
Well, I think Duncan has made the, made the point for me that there are walking paths in all, in all our habitat blocks. And so my, I would dump this requirement and stick with what we've got. Seems to work well. And the people who want to go and walk in the woods know where to go already. Unless the owner says, I don't want you in here.
So then, well, I think, well, I think that's the point, right? You know, I, sorry, but that's the point. Like, if you're gonna, if someone would get credit under that table as a site amenity or or civic space, does seem like there would have to be some kind of access, like some informal path and the ability for someone to, or the allowance of someone to walk in there. Because otherwise, it's not, it's not an amenity.
Yeah, it has to be an accessible path and not, you don't have to go through private property to get to it. You know, because certainly in Butler Farms right now, you have a situation where there's a path and you have to go through private property to access it. There's, there's no way, there's no way around that, especially after they improved the, the stormwater system. Before the stormwater system, you could actually get through on public land and now you can't. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure how that, how that upsets things. But, um, but the other, I think the, the point that Michael's probably, I think, getting at, but he didn't really say it, is that if you allow, um, you allow, uh, the habitat portions to be considered as, um, an amenity, um, uh, then that you're losing some other, some other recreational amenity that would be required to be developed on some other portion of the site. Because you, you didn't really say that, but I'm thinking that's what you're getting at. Because they're kind of getting off, they're getting off, they're getting off the hook a little bit, you know, for, for having to do something else. On the other hand, you know, I mean, if, depends on the neighborhood, you know? If it's a family neighborhood, they probably want to have a little, a little public, a little, um, play park or something like that. They wouldn't want to just have the the forest trails and stuff, whereas it's.
Yeah, that would have, then have it as a site amenity.
So, yeah, so Kelsey, maybe you can help us understand the definition that you have up there. Because it feels a little hard to understand the difference between civic space and site amenity.
So for, so, yes, so this is in, um, Article two, so it's the definition section. This I haven't worked on, but I can definitely do that. Um, it is the very bare bones version of the civic space and site amenity definition. It does kind of conflate the two things. Um, but then civic space and site amenity are then further regulated in their sort of respective places. And so I wanted to bring up also, um, so this is, it's very bare bones. It's very skeleton. It's just, you know, public, publicly available space. Um, however, here is the def, the further regulation on civic space. This is actually in, um, a T N D, a traditional neighborhood development. It's the best sort of further statement I could find, kind of very quickly looking for the word civic space. So that, I think, is the key, the core of of what a civic space is supposed to do. Um, it's not kind of written in the straight definition. It can be, that part can be moved up to the definition if if necessary, but, um, I'm sorry, I can un-highlight that because it's, the contrast is bad to to read, but, um, it's supposed to be the area, it's, there's a lot of talk now, um, recently about third spaces. So most people have work and home or school and home. Um, and community is actually built in third spaces. So places like, um, social clubs or libraries or sports fields or other place, even coffee shops, places where people build relationships with others. And the intention is the civic space is kind of the outdoor version built into a new development area or a redevelopment area that provides sort of the the outdoor version of of that. So generally speaking, the civic space examples are things like plazas and parks and parklets. Um, there's several other things, um, various, various sizes and and focuses, playground areas, things like that, where the the residents of an area or the users of a commercial area or mixed use area, um, interact with each other. So for something to be counted as a civic space, uh, it was our, our suggestion that it does include something that is social. Uh, and a trail doesn't quite necessarily meet that intention of civic space. The move towards allowing some of the, some of a habitat block or other conservation lot to be counted towards some percentage that we didn't, we didn't specify, but the commission could absolutely specify if it's, you know, twenty percent of their requirement or a hundred percent of the requirement, that's something that you guys can decide or, you know, turn the dial on. It has to do with what the owner of the property is allowed to do with their, their property and what the city is telling them they they can or cannot do.
This is the buildable area. A natural resources or habitat block is considered unbuildable, is it not? When you look at these developments. So I would read this as, you know, if you have a hundred acres and, you know, maybe seventeen of it is in a natural resources area or a habitat block. And you know, going in with your development plan, that you can't build there. But then the rest of the acreage, um, of that remaining acreage, a minimum of ten percent needs to be, meet this civic space, which is different than the walking paths or whatever you might have in the natural resources area. It's just kind of evolved either by animals running through and making the path or people. Right, so I mean, so in fact, you would get more.
I think it's a kind of disturbance, uh, uh, might be defined, doesn't it? We have a definition of disturbance, um, and then there's an allowance for it.
Right.
So it's, um, that's a tough nut, nut to crack.
Yeah, and I, I'm very happy to reach out to the city attorney's office and, um, have them potentially put together, either, either put together a more formal opinion or offer executive session to the planning commission to discuss this further. I would not recommend at this point that too much more of the commission's opinion on what habitat block should or should not be allowed to be used for, um, take place without their further legal guidance.
All right, well, it seems like a good, um, further discussion. So, yes, please, Kelsey.
Yep.
And I think, um.
When you do that, reference the, the current definition of a habitat overlay district.
They have the L D Rs. Thank you, Michael.
I think it'll be, yeah, I think it'll.
Also had legal review.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Well, that's why we would want the law, the council here.
So it seems like as part of that same discussion, just having, um, like a continuation of the discussion of like civic space versus site amenity and like what counts and where they're required, just to make sure we're very clear on like what's being required when, and what counts towards those requirements. Because you're right, the table currently has it listed as a site amenity, so. Okay, that sounds great. Um, good catch, Michael. So the fir, you had a first question though, too. Um, you said two things and we picked up on the second one, I think.
First one was, well, it's probably, uh, academic at this point because we're not, we're doing away with the conservation P U D. So the manner in which S one hundred, H forty-seven, the manner in which a conservation P U D, uh, contravenes the term, the terms of those two.
Yep.
Pieces of legislation, I was wondering whether you had a sort of brief explanation.
Sure, yeah. So it's actually a two, it's a twofold issue, um, for us. It's, there is nothing in Act forty-seven that says you can, you know, thou shalt not have a conservation P U D. What it does, um, do is assign that minimum five units an acre density requirement to anywhere that develop, in any residential district or develop, residential development is allowed. Having a conservation P U D that has a floating zone, technically, we're allowing residential development on the entire parcel until that that distinction is is made. What the, um, so what you're ending up, setting up is the the potential for someone who says, say, has a hundred acre parcel to say, I can put five hundred, I have the right under the state statute to put five hundred units on this parcel. City, you can't tell me I can't do that because the unit, the cit, the state is telling me that I can put five hundred units on my hundred acre parcel. Um, previously, how the city dealt with that kind of thought process was in a P U D, you were allowed to shift your density from the seventy percent conserve to the thirty percent development area. The trick is, is that the previous maximum for, and I can move my microphone, the previous maximum for that shifted density was six units an acre. So it is just a little bit higher than what the state is telling the city. This is the unfortunate, the minimum maximum that you can set. This is the lowest the municipality can set their maximum density is five. So the developer could only shift enough to get to six under the previous setup. The way that we're doing our minimum, that the, the commission has, has, um, proposed five thousand square feet for a single family home, et cetera, et cetera, for small, medium, um, multifamilies. The effective density of all of that is somewhere in the eight to twelve units an acre range. If you do sort of the math the other way. So we're already giving, the city is giving landowners a density that far exceeds, well, it exceeds the minimum that the state is saying your maximum can be and is exceeding the previous maximum density on these properties um, in the development area, the shifted development. So what the. So what the, what the whole is, is if you say the whole thing is developable and therefore has the shiftable density, you open up the opportunity for a developer to come in and say, I want to shift all my density and I want to put it all over here. And then it far exceeds what this commission and what the council, sorry, I looked at you, but you're not on the council anymore. What the council has stated in the city plan as the desired density or scale of, of residential development for these areas. So what you would have to do is if you wanted to keep the conservation PUD, you would have to, what you would probably have to do is set the maximum density in the shifted development area at like 20, 30, something units an acre, something very high to be able to accommodate the density from the, the rest of the property. Because previously you were shifting from 1.2 units an acre up to six. So somewhere in the five-ish times. So now you, five-ish times five is in the 25-ish range that you would have to allow them to, to shift. And that would be completely contradicting the city's policy goals where all of this is supposed to be low scale residential and, you know, very light, commercial, mixed use where, where these conservation PUDs apply. So you could keep, you could keep the whole structure. But what you would effectively have to do is allow these pockets of extreme, not extremely, of much higher density than the city, the city stated policy.
Hundred acre example, you'd have to allow 350 units from the 70% to go into the 30%.
Correct.
It's 30 acres.
Right.
So you're looking at.
A lot.
Thirty-five units per acre. Ah, sorry, no.
No, 12.
12.
So.
But then that's already what we're allowing. So then they're not really getting anything. Yeah.
So one of the things that we talked about was, okay, well, you know, to keep it, you know, that structure doesn't really work very well because you don't have anything that you're, you can trade anymore. Like what we were trading got kind of eliminated by act.
Yeah, we were talking about pre-designating.
Yeah. So.
I'm not sure we were pre-designating the 30% or pre-designating the 70%.
Oh, that's kind of what we were thinking.
Kind of the line between the two.
Basically to draw the line between the two. And then we have our area that's the development area that would go into the sewer water district and therefore get the five units an acre minimum. And then the area that's, you know, would have previously been kind of the conservation area would be, you know, we talked about just NRP. You know, we already have the great NRP.
We talked about conserving the NRP and that's.
It's like a predetermined conservation area.
Yeah. So instead of having it be the conservation purity. So.
It's not floating. It's like, this is where it is.
Yep. And that it precludes that it says water and sewer is here. So that's the only place that this applies, your density requirement state. It applies in the water and sewer service area. It doesn't apply where we're saying there isn't water and sewer service area. So it, it undercuts that whole argument from the beginning.
And does the density, maximum density still sit at six?
No, it's set by the square feet by building type, the same as everywhere else. So the 5,000, 7,000, 9,000 based on building type.
Also, well, you could have a TND in there.
Yes.
And then all the rules that go along with TND or subdivision would just apply. And then in the, what would have otherwise been conservation zone is just NRP. So regular NRP rules would apply. So it eliminates the extra structure.
The, the only remaining thing that Kelsey was going to bring to this, to the next meeting was how the, the manner in which the NRP part is conserved. What is the mechanism that we're going to use? But if you don't have it ready,
So.
We could wait.
So current, so the recommendation is that the NRP is the NRP. It's conserved by being the NRP. Plus anything else that's in that area, wetlands, et cetera, would have their additional layers of protection. But right now, what the, the protection would be, well, it's, it's sort of the same thing and it's sort of different where it's, it's being designated NRP gives it the regulations of the NRP. Also being not designated water and, water and sewer service area. While, while sort of two sides of the same coin, they are sort of slightly different things, like not falling into the water and sewer service area and being NRP are kind of two complementary protections on that, on the area.
Made one single family or one duplex if it's 15 acres or less.
Yes.
And three if it's 15 acres or more.
That's what's written in the draft. Yes.
This seems a lot less complicated to me. And in achieving what are the city's intent.
I'll stop being as verbose as I've been. I had several glasses of prosecco before coming here tonight. Special occasion.
Oh, yes. This is anniversary night, isn't it? Is that what you, oh, oh, today's birthday.
Wow, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Michael.
Thanks for joining us on your birthday.
The hell are you doing here?
Yeah. Free pass on your birthday.
He came to speak up.
You know, you have a good voice, so you can sing.
Other business.
I don't want to sing into the microphone, although I like wishing you happy birthday.
I want you to turn the microphone off. Sue doesn't need to hear that.
Okay.
We could just silently.
So let's see where, so we talked a little bit. So does anybody have questions about the administrator, administrative officer piece? Kind of skipped over that. Okay. Let's see. Reorganized.
Actually, Kelsey, can you just give a quick explanation of that, which the reorganization?
Yes. Yep. So there is a section in 15A that talks about resource protection. And it identifies both things that are Article 12 and some additional things like historic resources, scenic resources, et cetera. The previous section was written in a way that didn't really explain or, or show in sort of logical order, the relationship between Article 12 and the Article 15A resource protection language. What I was working, what I worked on trying to do is, is really clarify, pull out some of the stuff that is Article 12 related because that's regulated by Article 12. And you just didn't want something to say two words different over here is over here and open up sort of a hole between those two things. And then really focus on the things that are not Article 12 and clarify what protections those things get, like having to identify historical resources on a property before you do a major subdivision, things like that. So that was really trying to, to tease apart what is an Article 12 protected resource and what is some of these other things and how does that work together?
Yeah, the thing of being archaeological and historic sites, sites and.
Yep.
Forests, shade trees, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep. And I didn't add or delete from that list of, of other things. I took out some stuff that was like, and Article 12 or whatever. I put them where, you know, kind of where they needed to be. But I didn't, those, the things that are listed as resources or site, site resources in that section were, was the list that was already there.
Is it tree ordinance? If we ever, I mean, I guess we will get one from natural resources.
That is pending after this.
Will that impact? That language?
The way it is currently written, no. It's going to take some work to have what has been presented work well in the LDR. So it's potent, it's possible that it could touch some of this language or, or sort of amplify some of what's already in this language. But it's not structured that way at the moment. No. So the legal, the legal direction from the city attorney is that it would not be an, a tree ordinance. It would be additional tree regulation in the LDRs. So just slightly different legal structure.
Yeah. And then Kelsey, just to follow up on this section, there's right under that, it says, A, resource protection. And it talks about the conservation lots. Is that generally the same, the idea of kind of putting those resources on the conservation lot? There's no big change there.
No big change there. That's, that's generally if you have a big wetland complex or something, you have to subdivide it off, stuff like, stuff like that. Developers could also choose to just have a conservation lot or an open space, common area, whatever, like you can call it a bunch of different things, but it could either be required because it's a, a big wetland complex, or it could be optional because a, a developer decided that they, you know, for whatever reason, wanted to create a conservation lot.
Got it. Okay. Anything else on this list? Oh, Donna?
The tweaks to the street layout standards. Again, this, going back to subdivision, this, this is something that's kind of, I've had as an issue for a while where existing subdivisions, you know, the older ones tend to have excessive street widths. Not at all the same standards that the new neighborhoods do. And because the subdivisions are, you know, approved many years ago. Is there at some point where you have enough development in existing neighborhood where it triggers some revision of the street type or the street design?
Like if an existing neighborhood doesn't change, but needs more or less or different street? I think it would, it would require a new application of some kind to trigger city regulation again.
So it would have to be more than one house or, you know, but say 50% of the houses became duplexes or, you know, you just started developing a lot more density in an existing neighborhood. At what point do you revisit the, the street type?
So that's probably more of a question for our deputy director of capital projects, Erica Qualen. She does a lot of the work for, she's a traffic engineer, transportation engineer. I don't remember exactly which, I get all the, those cross. But this is what she does professionally. So that is something that I can, I can ask her. That's not something that I have dealt with. Or that we've dealt with.
Yeah, it does come up at the bike and pet meetings a lot with Erica.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you know, Erica.
Yeah, we, we do talk about that. And, and actually, one of the things we talk about a little bit is in the new neighborhoods that some of the streets are so narrow and the curbs are very dangerous that there's a concern that bicycles are not, it's, it's not safe to bicycle in some of the new neighborhoods out, you know, off the bike path. You know, off, off, off the path because you can't get away, you can't get off the street very easily. Well, you can get off where there's a driveway. Right. But, you know, it's just like those narrow streets and very sharp stone curbs are really kind of hazardous for kids on bikes. And that's who's biking in the neighborhoods, at least, at least in my neighborhood. I, I have a question on the streets. When I read this, I mean, it talks about a street grid and I always think of the grid as having right angles. I thought that some of the conversation with some of the, I guess, more recent developments that weren't permitted under this vision or even the last one, that some of those curvy roads are what's, were calming and slowed down the traffic and that that was an advantage or was seen as a positive thing. And then so I wasn't certain just.
That's, that's allowed. So.
That, that is, you can't have the circle, the dead end, but.
Right. So all the like, grid doesn't mean necessarily grid, except that dead end streets are very limited. So they do, things do have to connect to other things. The other thing is there is something in here about intersections being as close to 90, 90 degrees as possible, instead of being kind of sort of wise intersections. And that is, is intended to be sort of a, a traffic comping where, you know, it's a lot harder to take a, a right angle at a higher speed where if it's at a, you know, an 80 or 70 degree angle, whatever it is, you can take that more quickly. So that is included in here as maybe the road is curving, but where the other road meets it, it has to be a direct, it's supposed to be as close to, as possible to a direct tangent to it.
The narrower streets have definitely slowed traffic down because people are driving down the middle of the street because they don't know where the right side of their car is.
Yes, we're not going to solve that.
We're not, we're not Europeans in cars, that's for sure.
So I did put up on the screen, if anyone is interested, this is the street layout section in, in the red line version. So some of these small changes are things like, it was called street grid, and then it said the street layout must, and like just consistency. Adding reference to master plan, adding just a little bit more language, clarifying a few things, consistency with official map. This is a solar gain requirement. Some of this I think was moved from a different section. It wasn't written in whole, in whole cloth.
Yeah, that used to only apply on the SEQ. And then we moved it somewhere else.
Yep. And then so it makes sense to be sort of in, when you're laying out your streets. Public streets, that was moved, private streets. That has been edited a little bit here. It used to say within a commercial subdivision, master plan or planned unit development. It wasn't totally clear if that meant commercial subdivision is one thing and then master plan is a different thing, but could be any master plan. So that was the change to the serving non-residential uses only. That's a good example where I added language and it doesn't show up because I also moved it. So it's, it's, it's kind of hard. Oh, this is the street orientation thing that was then moved up above. That's the planned official map street. So some of it is just reorganization. There is a bit of change in sort of the cost of building to the property line. Conditions of subdivision approval. Indicating the future location of, of a connection. Oh, here's another one. That's, that's important. The applicants have an opportunity to request waiver of some of this requirement for right of way. This says that the DRB shall consider some, some sort of substitution of connection. So bike, pet, et cetera, connection before they consider a full waiver of the requirement. So that was, that was added. Say that again. So if, say, for example, there's, there's something that says that the, 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 an applicant needs to build a full road to connect to another full road. And they say, we, we can't do that. There's no way we can do that because there's a wetland that comes in like this and a wetland that comes in like this. And there's only a gap of 14 feet or something that we can't build a full road. So you should just not require us to do anything. That's just saying the DRB, instead of saying, sure, you can do nothing because you can't build a full street without encroaching on the wetlands. That instead they must consider trail, rec path, that should say shared use path, sidewalk, et cetera, some other kind of connectivity. Yep. This is just clarified a little bit of, a little bit of clarification language. Oh, one more change was made here. I talked, I did talk to Erica and subdivision entrances can be, she's, she's comfortable 350 feet apart. That is more consistent with this table of signalized intersections. Again, some of this has just been reorganized. So the 90 degrees, traffic calming, clarifying a few things, you know, the director of public works instead of others. Just as a point of information, the additional, so Nick Atherton has been working on the transportation demand management work. A sort of parallel piece of work with that is changing some of this level of service standards that we, that we use in the city because the, it's a statewide level of service D. And so excuse me, working on changing that a bit. So I, if that's the reason it's highlighted here is because it's, it's sort of future work that'll be plugged into this, this space. Again, most of this is just moved.
Jimmy, can we go back to the number of road trips in the signalization? And I'm, I'm just curious how that who pays for
Who pays for. Eventually, the need for the traffic signal? I mean, you sort of get incremental development, so no one gets over the top with. Too many cars coming in, that would require another turning lane or a stop. Well, stop sign is probably cheap, but but um a um a signal. And then, voila. The numbers that came in for development or whatever were um lowballed. And there's far more traffic, or people are using it as a cut through when no one imagined they would. And we need a a signal. Is that the city? Who's responsibility? I mean, is it the the last developer in gets stuck with the bill? Or is it um the city? And and in some ways, I'm thinking about the traffic light at the end of Market Street. That was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the city spent. Because of. I don't know, because we needed it for safety and traffic. For the school, we knew the school was there, yes. All the new buildings, which don't even have cars and, you know, attached to them yet, because they're not all. People haven't moved in yet, they're not completed. So how does that work?
Yeah, yeah.
Part, but they didn't pay for that signal.
So our or, I don't know, I can't remember what money we used.
So I think the city center is slightly different in the funding stuff because of the TIF district and everything else, so there's some details of that that I'm not sure about. This, I should just back up and put a little bit of clarification on this this table specifically. So it's currently written as being um peak hour volume of traffic. In a previous, in the conversation I had with Erica about the four hundred feet. She made it pretty clear that that's not really best practice for measuring um distance between signalized intersections. She, a a point of future editing and work um. At her suggestion, and 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 I agree, would be reworking this for miles per hour on the street. On the sort of the adjac- the the adjacent street, so that is not um reliant on the vehicle trips. Like this is, um so it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. Where it's, and this is not whether or not you, this is actually not whether or not you need a signal, it's how far apart the signals have to be. So it's a little bit of a different thing. I don't know about the funding mechanism for um installation of of signals. And if a if a new subdivision required one and. You know, who would pay for that? I don't know.
Yeah, like uh this one, I'm curious about how this would apply on Heinsberg Road. Yeah. You know, sort of. Because, you know, like Bike and Pet's been trying very hard to get the city to. Or get the state to reduce the speed limit there. And um we can't even get a crosswalk. Um because of the current speed limit being above forty-five miles an hour, fifty mile an hour speed limit. And, you know, the distances of signalized intersection, we're gonna start having that conversation. While it's still a fifty mile an hour road, which makes no sense. So I I think there's there's more discussion that sort of has to happen around this.
Oh, absolutely, and that's and that's part of um. Me pulling out the bullet points in the in the memo is that there are a lot of things in this, in these regulations that. Deserve much deeper study and and conversation. Um they are not required for S one hundred and act or act, S one hundred, Act forty-seven compliance. So it's it's definitely something that we have flagged.
It does kind of, it does pertain, because, you know, you have, you will have neighborhoods in in on Heinsberg Road now, but. Now we'll have. Three to four times as many houses, four times as much traffic potentially, because there's no bus service there, and. All the traffic from Heinsberg is still, is a lot of traffic on on that road already.
Right, I guess, I guess my point is not that it's not connected, is that at some point for this round of amendments, we have to cut it off.
Yeah, it's not this discussion, but it would be nice to put a really big index, you know, s- stamp on there and say. We need to recome back and revisit this. You know, not right now, but.
Yeah, there's a lot of things in that bucket.
That's a big one.
Are we uh ready to move on to fifteen B, the master plan items here? And we don't necessarily need to talk about all of these if people don't have questions.
What's what's the change on this one? Ten years is, that's what it already is, right?
No, at this, um what it already, what it is currently is the D R B can set the duration. Um sort of varying based on the the size of the development, the intended um timeline of the development, it can be. Fairly short, um or it could be up to ten years, and it just, it's another decision of the D R B that doesn't really need to. Exist. It's so it's just, it's it's a lot simpler for everybody to not have to argue that point as well as everything else. Um the the bigger plan for this is that it is um. Tightening a little bit, what develop, what projects need master plan review to align more closely to. The purposes of master plan. So previously, master plan was required for all major sub, well, currently, not previously, currently. Master plan is required for all major subdivisions, and the threshold for major subdivision can be fairly low. You know, you you divide one lot into three or four lots, and it can be a major subdivision. You do any P U D, it's considered a major subdivision. Um so the the submission requirements for a master plan. Make a lot of sense for projects that are in multiple phases over. And or over a certain amount of years, or have cleared additional development potential. But some of these, the the lower end of what we still consider a major subdivision. Um or especially the low end of something like a general P U D that could be fairly small. It it's a really high hurdle uh for some of these really small projects, especially when we're talking about. These minimum lot sizes that may enable someone who owns. Two acres to be able to do something that is considered a major subdivision. But fully builds it out, is building it out in one phase, and is doing it in, you know, two years. The master plan process is is. Onerous and kind of duplicates too much of what's required for a major subdivision, because the master plan is effectively. How do you do ma- major subdivision and or site plan over multiple phases or years? So if you're not doing that sort of extended thing, then taking out that, those sort of blanket requirements that have. In the D R B and the development review side of our office, in their experience over the last two years of having master plan, it has caught. Inadvertently caught some some pretty small projects and and um. Discouraged otherwise good um infill or small development.
What ha- happens if, so you have the master plan, and it it's set for ten years. And um. During that period of time, the state realizes that they need to do even more for housing. And pass some additional. Um density language. It doesn't apply to them, even if it is.
The state would always preempt, so the s- the state doing something, if if the city decided to change its rules.
Right.
They're all set, but if the state did, then they get the state rules.
And then they would have to submit a new master plan.
Probably.
Probably.
You could, you could do that, or you could um do a minor amendment to the master plan, depending on what kind of change it was. So it could kind of go either way with that kind of thing.
Okay, well, I think I think all that makes sense, and it's in line with the intent of S one hundred, which is to. Enable development in a reasonable, with a reasonable process, so.
And and I would even say, it's it's really just tailoring master plan to the purposes that master plan already had. It just, what the purposes of master plan were were. Casting too wide a net and catching some things that didn't really need master planning.
Um anything else in master plan section that people have questions on? Okay. The next one was fifteen C, and we did actually talk about some of this already. With the changes to conservation P U D, but there might be some other things in here too.
I mentioned to Jessica earlier, at one point, you mentioned a minimum density of four units an acre. Is that a mistake? It's supposed to be five, right?
Where?
In a residential, page fifty of the packet.
It's possible that it's language from the previous that I didn't catch.
Uh neighborhood residential, fifty-one or more, blah blah blah. Not less than four dwelling units per acre. Shouldn't that be five?
Oh, wait a minute, is that a minimum density?
That's a, so that's a minimum density, not a maximum density. We couldn't say. The maximum density is four units an acre, we can say the minimum is.
I thought it had to be five, I thought five, I got the.
Five is the, five is the lowest that the city can set the maximum. So we couldn't, that's why we can't, you can't have an R four, R two anymore, but you could, if we kept this. The previous structure, you could have R six, seven, eight. This is setting a minimum that you can't, if you own a certain. If you own one acre of land, that's not a T N D, but hypothetically, it's one acre of land, you have to put four homes on it, you can't put one. But that's just in the T N D.
Okay. I was, I was confused, I thought, I just thought it was.
Oh, it's, it's the minimum maximum, and it's a whole, like, the semantics around it make it hard to understand. I I get what.
Just to clarify where I'm seeing it, and correct me if I'm wrong Duncan, but it looks like it's even only one part of the T N D.
Yep.
Because then there's like a zone around the edge where it could be less than that.
I I misunderstood, I thought it had to be five.
It's it's confusing.
No, so so that brings up a good point, actually, like, so say you own. An acre of land in the water and sewer service area somewhere. The city can't tell you the maximum that you can build on it is one, you can still, you can choose to build one house. There's nothing in S one hundred that says you have to build five houses on your one acre. What it's saying is that the city can't tell you, you can't build more than five. That was bad. That was very complicated the way I said it.
Oh no, I made it worse.
It's, there's a difference between, the difference I'm trying.
There is mud.
Yes, the clarification that I'm trying to make is the city is regulating with the the state, okay. The state is regulating the caps that the city can set. It is not telling any individual landowner how many pro- homes you need to build on a property.
Got it.
Telling you that you you can't build less, the city can't tell you that you can build less than five.
That you must build less than five.
Okay.
On on table, I think it's fifteen. C oh six one, traditional neighborhood.
I didn't touch these tables.
Okay, because there's a four dwelling unit per acre in the residential neighborhood. In that table.
That's the same thing we talked about.
It's confusing, because you think, oh, I thought it was five.
Right.
That's the, that's the minimum, that's, that's the city saying. If you have this piece of land, you must build four units on an acre. The state is never telling, and is isn't telling anyone in S one hundred that you must build a certain number on the acre. What they're saying is the city can't cap your number on the acre at less than five.
So isn't that what this is doing?
This is a minimum.
So it's saying you have to build four units an acre, if you're gonna build anything.
Right.
But isn't, but.
It's very strange.
Isn't that the city telling you that you've got to build four, states saying, the state's saying, no, you've got to build five.
Somewhere between one and five, it's fine.
Yes.
Yeah.
The ci- this, what the city is saying is you must build four. You can build five, or you can build ten, or whatever. What the state is saying is city, you can't set your maximum density at less than five. So if this said your minimum is four and your maximum is four and a half, that's not acceptable. If it said the minimum is four and the maximum is five, that's acceptable, or anything above that, which is where the proposed draft is.
So you can't just build one.
In this part of the T N D, yes.
In the, in the middle part. Of the T N D, like kind of the inner portion of the T N D, because there is a. Like a transition area around the outside of the T N D.
Yep, and if you, and if you look at the tran- the transit area and the center area are actually more dense, you have to build eight.
Yeah.
So that's going from the outside to the inside, has to get denser. As we go.
It can be very confusing. The minimum part. Yeah.
Be fun to see the first development that goes through this, what it looks like.
Okay, anything else on the P U D piece? Um, anything else? Kelsey, you wanted to highlight on these items. You're allowed to say no.
I feel like I wrote a question in here, and now I don't remember. I should remember what my own questions are, but.
Well, you wanted us to give you feedback.
Yes, I did, and you have done so. Oh, I think there was a little bit of this discussion earlier, but just as you, I know it's it's dense and it's regulatory language, and it's, it's. At times hard to read, but generally speaking, is there any particular areas that you tripped over? And said, like, actually, this piece is worse. I'm not gonna say it's good, but this piece is worse than the rest of it.
There was one section where you used the word contrary that seemed kind of out.
All right, where is it? Where do you got? Well, let me see if I, if I can use the word.
On plan unit development?
It was something, no, something to do with Article twelve. Contrary where it seems like it should have been complimentary, I I.
Contrary is used twice on um page nineteen of the packet under resource protection.
Yeah, maybe that's it.
This, the sentence is, a sub- a subdivision shall not physically fragment, legally subdivide, or develop. Hazards or level one resources contrary to the protections of Article twelve.
Okay.
A subdivision shall be consid- configured to minimize and mitigate adverse impacts on level two. Oh, the second one.
Yeah.
Minimize and mitigate adverse impacts on level two resources. Okay, yeah, I have to work, thank you for pointing that out, that is, I have to either use a different word for the second sentence, or. Rework the first part of the sentence, thank you.
Yeah, no double contrary.
No double contrary. No, it's more, it's because I wrote.
On Article twelve, don't screw it up.
No, it's more that I wrote, I wrote. Develop contrary to, and then later I wrote mitigate contrary to, and those are not the same thing. Thank you.
Okay, um. So I I know that this was a lot to read with, without the red line, especially over the holiday weekend, so I mean, I think that. We can have room to like circle back. Kelsey, do you agree with this? Like, if if somebody. You know, now, based on the discussion tonight, takes another look through. And has more questions, like, we can address them, um you know, either at the next meeting or another time also.
And then if there's also, if there's anything that's just clarifying what I'm saying, or or like what Duncan pointed out, like, I don't think that's what you meant. You can always send that kind of thing as an email to me, or if you want to. Talk through a section that you don't understand, or whatever it is, I'm available as a resource for that, because it's, it's as likely as that. You don't understand it as I wrote something that is unclear um or incorrect, and we can work it out. But that doesn't require, I can, I would highlight any changes that I made. For the whole full commission at the next meeting, but that kind of conversation doesn't need to happen with the, in in a meeting.
Section fifteen A eighteen um F, I'll send you some correct language for that.
Yeah, that's very.
There's a lot of little pockets of wherever it mentions lighting, and the language is always not right.
Well, we very much appreciate that, Donna. Um Fran, you had something?
Yeah, I just said a, another one of these things I can't figure out. Um, somewhere in here, it talks about having uh a ten foot wide driveway on the sidewalk side of the street. In other words, where the driveway crosses the sidewalk, the driveway can only be ten feet. But it seems to me like on the opposite side of the street where there's no sidewalk, the driveways would be twice as wide. No.
A lot of references to sidewalks.
Being able to. Yeah, I don't know where it is. I didn't highlight it.
Is that under street?
No, I think it's under this, the fifteen C.
Where do I search?
Oh, here it is, um, six.
Did you find it, Jessica?
Um, yeah, it's on page fifty one of the packet. Fifteen C six three, six A three. The width of a driveway from a front or side street must not exceed ten feet where it crosses an adjoining sidewalk along the street and must not result in a physical or visual interrupting interruption of the adjoining sidewalk. The sidewalk must clearly extend across the driveway.
So that is language that I did not change. Um, so a lot of these sort of more technical street standard stuff, I didn't actually change. Um, what that means is if you are, um, if you have a driveway that crosses a sidewalk to get to the street, it must be less, ten feet or less, and it must be clearly that clear that the sidewalk continues. So that's when you see things like the the concrete goes across the asphalt.
Yeah.
Um, so what was unclear there, sorry?
Well, it's it's just that, so that that's gonna cross at ten feet, but most dwelling units have a two car garage, so it's gonna widen.
Yep.
But on the opposite side of the street, if you only have sidewalks on one side, the opposite side is different. It can stay twenty or twenty-five feet all the way to the road.
Um, I would say under this section, that's correct. Um, I, there are different regulations about curb cut width that are um public works related, that are, I don't believe are addressed in subdivision themselves.
Okay.
So I don't think, I don't think you could have a twenty or thirty foot curb cut, even if there is no sidewalk. But this is setting the the sidewalk side because part of subdivision is sort of that connectivity of of per pedestrian movement.
Yeah, it was just a kind of visual thing that.
Yeah, that one side of the street could be totally different than the other. Yeah, I I think that is more governed by the um the curb cut regulations and the driveway specs. And that also depends on what kind of street you're entering onto, and if it's a state street, a state road, then it's different than city ones, and it's all kinds of stuff. But but yes, you do, we do have situations where it crosses at ten feet and then becomes wider, um, if someone wants side by side parking um, for a two car garage.
Anything else on this item up here or um in the audience?
If you could go, Ryan, if you could go to a microphone, actually, that one is we didn't have a second to set up the other table, so that's, you get the podium today.
Ryan here, on page eleven of the packet.
Ryan, if you could state your last name for.
Sorry. Um, where we have small lot merger. Um, says the elimination of lot lines between two contiguous, pre-existing, non-conforming small lots. Um, the way that your, the commission looks like it's going with the five thousand square feet. Will that eliminate all such scenarios, or will we still have that in Paul's neighborhood where there are conjoining lots smaller?
So it's it's not just non-conforming in total area. It could be non-conforming because of the shape or the width, or there's there are setbacks. There's other things that could make a lot non-conforming, other than just strictly area. Um, so strictly area, there would be still maybe a dozen in the city. Um, but there's there are other lots that are like a weird triangle shape or something, or don't have enough frontage for whatever reason. Or, you know, there's there's other situations that something could be non-conforming.
So there has to be the situation where they're both non-conforming to have the merger take place.
So that's, that was language that was already in the L D Rs. Um, that was not, it was rearranged in this draft. Um, for logic purposes, but it was not, the substance of that section was not changed.
Okay, um, I I bring it up because I, Paul has mentioned a couple of times his concern with um, the possibility of small, less expensive lots being consolidated and rebuilt larger um because of things. And I don't know if this is an area where there might be some additional um, type of limitation put on that would make that harder in um healthy, thriving neighborhoods. Um, like, for example, like, I I looked at on the grand list, I made another field, and Paul's neighborhood is like valued at one point seven million an acre, which is huge. And if somebody were to like merge those lots and build something new, I wondered if it would actually even reach that same value per acre level, since a lot of newer neighborhoods actually don't reach that. And I didn't know if that would be possibly a tool to leverage or prevent um, weird mergers in in thriving dense neighborhoods like that.
Um, so I'd say that this this language allows merger of very few situations in the city at this at this point.
Okay.
Um, so it's those handful that are small, they'd have to be small next to each other. Um, they'd have to be under five thousand, um, which is very few, and and or miss a different sort of dimensional box, um, which doesn't really add too many. There's a handful that are weird, you know, triangles, but they might be a very steep slope or a wetland, something that makes it unbuildable otherwise. Um, so I'd say the number of lots that are affected by this provision is is very small.
Still pretty small with the the new.
Yep.
Lot changes. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, uh, anything else on this item, or we go on to the E V?
Wanted to uh
Yeah.
Say that I think that Kelsey did a great job for us posting up our office and putting all this together. It gets really good.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Spy zone approach, I think, very well.
It's the only way I could think of doing it, cause the linear, like, word processor was just not not cutting it. I needed at least two D, if not three D.
So we're going on the, onto the E V thing?
Yes, on to the.
Draft of the electric vehicle vehicle changing in new buildings is is good, except for the changing part.
Except for the what?
Oh, does it say?
No, but seriously, I I think this covers everything that we talked about last time.
We do have Nick online if there are any, if there are any questions. Um, Nick, did you hear there's there's one typo of changing instead of charging?
Evidently, there is, yes.
Right up front in the title. Any other comments or questions? I mean, we've seen maybe not the red line, but the concept a few times now.
Well, that's what's new. Um, what's the next step?
Um, that it, there is a a report, the same way that you always get for the for an L D R amendment that this, the planning commission's report that goes with an amendment, and then that would end up in the same package of amendments as everything else that we're we're working on for one, one mama public hearing.
Yeah, I would approve this for for to go into that report, as is.
Yep, the the commission is is welcome to make a motion to the that effect. Um, I would say hold setting any date for a public, for a public hearing, like, don't, you know, move to have a public hearing on X or Y date. Um, but you're you're perfectly open to to move it forward for public hearing at a at a future date or something.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second on moving it forward? Okay, um, any discussion from anyone? Assuming the typos changed, we'll assume that's done. Um, okay, all all in favor of moving it forward?
Alright.
Very nice job, Nick. Thank you for joining us tonight, in case we needed you.
Who seconded? I missed.
Okay, on to, and that was big kudos to the energy committee for all of the legwork and Nick for all of the legwork, cause we had quite a few major questions, and they they really helped us out to move that forward.
Yeah, I think they boiled it down to a very precise and unambiguous language.
So we have minutes from May fourteen.
Just like to say that I hope we can do a similar thing for the trees in the nature. City. Get a report from from the natural resources and conservation committee.
Yep, so I I will say we do have additional, you do have additional submission from the natural resources and conservation um committee. Uh, I have it on my desk for intending intending to review when I can. It's it's the, it's the next thing on the on the list after we get through more of of wrap up more of this process.
Cause we did a good job with this. The same kind of requirements for the trees, right? I mean, it has to become part of the statutes. The trees have to be written to the statutes.
Yeah, it's a little bit more complex, cause what the what the E V charging is doing is taking a state framework and just bumping up the level. So it's it's a pretty easy thing to do on the city side. Um, the the trees is a little bit more from scratch, but it's it's not, it's not too much.
Yeah, and it's probably doubly more from scratch, cause we already did have some E V language in there to begin with. Uh, they were beefing up, um.
I'm just.
Yeah.
Giving the trees.
No, good, no, I'm glad you are, cause it's like I, it's on the list, but yeah. Um, okay, so minutes from May fourteen.
I move to approve the minutes of May fourteen, twenty twenty-four, as predicted.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Donna?
I was curious, because Ryan's here, if if what's stated in number three is actually what he said, cause it doesn't sound right to me. It says, Mr. Doyle noted that in some places, electric boxes are being prohibited because they block the view of cyclists. I don't think you can prohibit an electrical box. What was what was it that you said? They prohibit views. Yeah, so it. Yeah, so that the electric boxes are creating hazard.
Hazard, yeah.
Hazards.
Yeah, which they are. It's a good point. Any any other minute comments? Okay, on favor with the change?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, cause I wasn't.
You don't have to abstain, but you're allowed to. So we pass six, six to one abstention. Six zero one. Um, so under other business, we had the uh Colchester item, which if people had questions on, we could talk about. Um, I also wanted to, um, just mention some meeting dates. Um, I guess this is mainly for Duncan's awareness. So next, next uh meeting, June eleventh, I'm gonna come, but I might be a little late. I have one of my work projects. I have to present at a meeting at six, but it's remote. So I can do that hopefully and then get here, but I might be late, just depending on how their board goes, so.
I will be here on the eleventh.
June eleventh, and then, um.
Twenty fifth.
June twenty fifth, I will also not be here. I will be at a conference out of town presenting. So June twenty fifth, um, Paul can, Paul can chair. Um, and I think we just want to make sure we have enough people to have a meeting.
Is everyone, is anyone, raise your hand if you will be absent on June eleventh. Donna will be absent. Okay, raise your hand if you will be absent on June twenty fifth. Okay, so we still have five, so nobody gets sick.
Or come ill. No, you can join remotely if you're sick.
And then I guess we could. And then the next one is July.
Would be July ninth.
July ninth, I'm here.
And July twenty third, so um just one at a.
Yeah, July nine.
July nine, who is absent?
Maybe.
Maybe Paul absent. Okay, and July twenty third. Don't know.
Pretty good chance I won't be.
Okay, so Jessica, absent, Duncan, absent.
And I'm not sure, I have.
Yeah, I believe that this is one where there's three Tuesdays.
Maybe and Paul, maybe, so that's not good.
Let's take a vacation.
You take your vacation.
We do sometimes take one July meeting. Tuesday, though.
Thirtieth, July thirtieth, if, raise your hand if you would be absent if a meeting was held on July thirtieth.
Well, I might be. I got family coming from out of town. I don't know when they're arriving.
Okay.
Okay, it does seem like July twenty third is a not, not a good week, so.
So I'm going to, I will, so we'll call July twenty third a no go, because there's two definite out and two maybe out. Um, I guess we will play it, well, there's only two maybes for the thirtieth, right? There's five yeses. Right, so there's, there's two maybes for July thirtieth, but there are five yeses, looking towards that end of the table for July thirtieth.
Okay.
Instead of the twenty third?
Instead of the twenty third, so let's let's plan on July thirtieth, instead of the twenty third. Um, betting on five potential of six and seven, but quorum occurs, even if you guys are both gone.
Okay.
Um, and if if you get to the ninth and decide, forget it, we don't need that meeting in July, then that's a decision the commission can make at that time.
Change it technically, right?
Yes, so I will, I will change it on the city calendar to the thirtieth, but if you get to July ninth and you decide that you don't want to do the thirtieth, then uh that can be a decision at that point.
Okay.
Okay, is that far enough in the future, or do we want to talk about August?
I mean.
Let's talk about August.
Well, that's vacation time. You're you're out of August?
Just taking the summer off.
My god. So August thirteenth.
Thirty fourth Tuesday, I'm not here.
Going too far out here.
Okay.
Yeah, we might be too far out. Let's just do August.
We'll do August later. I just, if there was, if there was five people who were definitely out and knew that now on the thirteenth, then I would note it. But it sounds like it's a question mark for everyone but Duncan. Duncan doesn't want to hang out anymore, is what I'm hearing.
The thirteenth is also the state primary.
Yes, Sue Helen noted that. Thank you for reminding everyone.
Madam Chair, uh, a special dispensation, would would you be okay if I bail out now?
Yeah, oh, yes, adjourned, adjourned, and happy birthday.
Yes.
Yeah. Go home and have some more.
There you go, there's more prosecco.
I think we did everything on the agenda.